Six is six oh one. We're ready to start our regular work session. It's May the twenty eighth at six P. M. At this time, let us stand for our invocation and pledge of allegiance. Our invocation will be led by Councilman McManus.
Bow your head, please.
Statch bath.
Our Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your your grace, your mercy in our lives. We thank you for what you've given this community, for its location, its its natural beauties, and its just wonderful people. Thank you, Lord, for this meeting, this time to do the work of the city that you've placed us here for this important task. And we just ask for your wisdom and for your guidance in every decision and every discussion. And we we thank you for each person who's come tonight. We just pray that you will keep them safe as we pray for each other and just hold each other up. Lord, we just thank you in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Now for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge my reasons to the flag, starlight, America, and to the great body with your sins. Formation under God, indivisible, one that ever has been, yes, the star.
The whole right. I just want to thank everybody for being a part of this process and coming and sharing with us on this day. Um, I know we got a hot topic to talk about and and to decide all the move further. I just want you to know, whatever the vote goes, it does make this final. Uh, if it was positive, it's just one step toward it. We have to have a second reading. We have to have um public hearings. Well, planning commission has to get it, but if it votes no, then we won't be able to go. So at this time, that's my uh comments. I'm just glad that we're now coming to this point in in um my life as I was the one that tabled this two years ago. And I'm just hoping that we can just get this behind us because it's it's really been a task. Uh, now at this time, administrator report.
Good evening, council, ladies and gentlemen. I think got some updates for you this evening. Um, keep this plug free. But the um property at uh two gonna help? Okay. Um, the uh three point six acres here on one seventy eight that we had uh prior approved the purchase of. And then we uh were working through getting it under contract. It is now under contract. That contract was executed uh Friday. Uh, and uh we will be moving forward with that purchase. So everything is in good shape with that set to close shortly after uh we approve our budget uh in the uh July timeframe. The other uh important information is that the last time we gathered together, we spoke to our auditors who brought us uh our delayed twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three audit, which, as we know, we had been delayed as far back as the year uh prior to that. We've gotten that audit caught up, uh which is a chore for everybody who's here because we are having to reconstruct records. None of us uh as far as the leadership team were here during these time periods. Uh, but this morning, I'm very pleased to say the last we left it, the auditors came to us and they said, we've got uh an unreconciled balance of a hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars. What do you want to do? Do you want to just close out the audit and say, we don't know? Or do you want to look further? And I think that everybody in Pickens, including you and me, wanted to look uh further. We didn't know what that would entail or how long the process would take. Uh, Finance Director Mandy Hess and um Dana Epps on her staff had already spent uh some time trying to identify back in the historic files what may have been the issue. Uh, we also work with a CPA firm, Manly Garvin, because our auditors cannot do CPA work for us. They have to just independently come in and look at at what the results have been. Um, after the meeting, uh most recently, one thing I do want to address, I I've understood and a couple of people have let me know there were questions about the draft document that was posted following that that meeting uh that showed the basically the state that they've reached. And there were questions about the table of contents indicating elements of the report that have not been completed, including their final summary of our finances. Um, it was a draft and every page that was given to council was posted to the public. So those were placeholders that when the document doesn't say draft on every page, that table of contents will match up. The pages may move to one degree or another, but that's where those sections will come in, just so everybody understands that. You have what we have. Um, this morning, we did have a conference call uh with Finance Director. Uh, Manly Garvin has spent some time over the last week as we directed uh or council directed at the last meeting. Um, and the belief is, and this was between our auditors uh at Green Finney, uh two of them, the Finance Director Dana Epps of her staff and David McAllister, who does our CPA work for Manly Garvin. The belief is, after rerunning some of the numbers, that the initial check reconciliation that was given to the auditors included checks that went back as far as two thousand sixteen that had never been dealt with. Um, you know, any business has a number of checks that you will go through that are either voided or that age out. They become stale. Uh, there was not a practice in place at this point. Uh, annually, we collect all those checks that have not been cashed and we can't find the people who are owed the money. And we send it to the state and the state takes care of that. And then they will, and we write it off of our books. So when we ran a report and looked through all the checking transactions from that year, and you're the expert, so you stop me if I say anything wrong. That initial report included all of those age checks, stale checks, and checks that were actually not voided until the next fiscal year. So that, they believe, accounts for about a hundred and three thousand dollars of the one hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars. Um, so that still leaves fifty some odd thousand dollars, which um our auditors are reviewing that. They will make the final determination of whether they believe that is what an auditor would call material or not. Um, but there is additional work going in because that amount was all lumped into a miscellaneous fund uh on the general fund side. We also have utility accounts, which are enterprise funds, which are business-like activities that user fees pay for what is done. The belief is that that remainder of fifty some odd thousand dollars doesn't belong in the general fund. It belongs in the utility fund. And apparently, and this is all historic lore to me, um, during that time period, there was an issue with many of our water meters and the software that was installed where some of our friends and neighbors received water bills and sewer bills for fourteen million, thirteen million, sixteen million dollars. Well, that could be laughable if, once you get that bill and you faint. But in the processes that were in place at the time, people would come in and say, I don't owe you fourteen million. And the clerk might say, well, yeah, you only owe us fifty dollars. And then they would issue, and each person was doing it in a different way. They would issue a credit, which then created ongoing problems with the finances that year because when you bill a fourteen million dollar water bill, that goes into your general ledger as somebody owes you fourteen million dollars. Well, then if you collect fifty dollars and don't properly close it out, that gap still exists. So apparently, there had been a lot of work trying to to fix that, but it never got completed. So what we are probably going to do is identify how big of a problem and try to increase our confidence and the auditor's confident confidence that that fifty five uh thousand dollars that remains is related to that. And the next question will be, if the auditors find we're confident we know where it is, do you want to spend a bunch of money going in and finding all of the fifty thousand? Or do you want to put it in the right fund and say there were bad practices in place and we now have good practices? All in all, based on where we were the last time we discussed this, where we were just shrugging our shoulders going, we hope to figure it out. That is a very, very positive development. Um, because we need to, you know, what are the the stakes here? Um, uh, an audit that has material issues is not good for anybody's um transparency or impression. You have to be honest about where you are. But as an organization, as a city, as people in this community, we want to make sure that we know where our money went, even if some of us weren't here at the time. This is also critical because we have to close out twenty two, twenty three before we can move into doing the audit for twenty four, which is now behind. And that is a year that we feel much more confident that a lot of things were addressed. So we want to get to that point. But uh I said it would be brief. It was long and involved. But I want to make sure everybody um understands that it's much sunnier. The auditors seem to be very pleased with what we found and they do want to um as accountants do, look through it and verify it for themselves. Uh, but I think we've got good news on the Orion Horizon and we'll be able to to close that audit out uh in much better condition.
And you see, you see, what's the question?
Yes, it's council.
Um, the uh, we, at our meeting where we talked about this initially, we we said it was important to find out, you know, what was going on so that if there were any bad practices, they could be corrected, et cetera. So regardless of what it was going to cost in theory, um, sounds like we're not going to be spending tons of money. But how much more work or trouble will it be to try to narrow down even further to find? I mean, we spent a week and we found two thirds of the money. Can we spend another week and get another two thirds and get it down to to maybe a five or ten thousand dollar discrepancy?
I believe that's possible and that's what uh, you know, so far, finding the the lion's share of it was the mission. Um, and now I do think we'll go forward because this hasn't covered, and that's really what an audit is for. Um, if you find that people have been doing things the way they've always done things and it just messes things up, for lack of a more technical term. Um, we were discussing that today with the auditors that we now know that we need and and we've introduced improvements to our credit issuing system. We don't have fourteen million dollar bills anymore, but credits are an ongoing thing. Um, we want to make sure that we've got segregation so somebody's not giving their friend John a credit on every bill and just saying he was paying too much. Um, we want to have an approval process and a a chain where these things can be followed, which is a best practice. Um, so yes, I agree with you exactly that we want to find what issues were in the system then and look at what we've changed since to improve it and then make tweaks to that even to make sure that we never have that issue again.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So Tim, Mr. Administrator, is this going to be within? If if the auditors find what you say is true, will the comfortable limits that we talked about, they wouldn't give it that number to me that I asked them in executive session. But is this going to be, take us within their comfortable limits to pass this audit?
My lay impression, not being an accountant, but from having them on a Zoom call and looking in their faces, they seem to feel very comfortable. They were not willing to make that leap quite yet, but they said, we're close. We're going to look at it and then we'll we'll let you know. They're accountants. Um, they're going to verify everything. But I do feel comfortable that that if it were to remain um instead of at a hundred and sixty thousand dollars at fifty thousand dollars. In the prior year audit, there was um, which was way before any of us. And that was, that would have been twenty two, twenty, that was twenty one, twenty two. I believe there was a remaining unreconciled balance of forty five or
they do is heard. Said.
Hops. It might have been sixty eight thousand. Um, so we we just want to get into the territory where we're dealing with current events and we can have all of our balances reconciled and have our best practices in place. But yes, I agree, we want to dig into it further. Um, and I think that now they've sniffed where they think the rot might be from that period of time. Um, and fortunately, it's not, you know, fraud, it's not malfeasance. It's just processes that we need to make sure that we're getting straight. Um, we do want them to dig further into it and verify what their thoughts are on those credit procedures.
So we, they're not verified yet. We, they think they're going in the right direction.
Um, the the one hundred and three, we we believe everybody felt comfortable that that's taken care of. So we went from a hundred and fifty seven
Okay.
down to what was it?
Fifty four thousand?
Fifty four, sometime around along those lines. And then they're going to test whether that belongs in the current late in miscellaneous in the general fund. They're going to look to put it where it actually belongs and then at least get a testable theory where they can say this is why it's that amount. Now, whether they go in and get every transaction to the dollar, that'll be a question that'll come back and forth. It depends on how easy it is, if they just find a rhythm to it. Um, but part of the concern might be that there is very little rhyme or reason to how each individual credit was handled. It the timing of the credits involved, the, you know, whether a month was closed and then somebody came in and asked for it, each case would be a different one. But yes, we want to find every penny we can. Um, not that anything is lost, it's just not filed in the right spot and we need it to be.
Are we confident we have procedures and policies in place now as far as billing credits of the utility department? I mean, is that, are we, are we good going forward?
My honest evaluation of it is that we have, we're greatly improved from where we were. Um, but seeing what has happened in the past, uh, we've already had conversations today about additional steps we need to take um to make sure that our Finance Director and her staff have uh essentially each department has been responsible for their own revenue, which would include um the front office. Our enterprise fund accounts, and those are such large amounts that we need to have more segregation of duties so that the the first interaction will be with the the person at the front counter. But the person at the front counter will not be authorized to to work something out. Each one of those will have to go through a process that Ms. Hess and her staff are going to work out so that they will be recorded, verified, and approved. Um, and that multiple people will be involved in that process. That's not to say that that's not how some of them have been handled now. Um, I've signed off on some when people have come and pled their cases. But I don't want to have that responsibility either unless I'm a cog in that wheel. Does it make sense? You want to have a form and a system that writes down a narrative of what happened, what the correction needs to be, and then it's authorized by more than one person in the chain of command. So we're working on a system that will do just that.
Thank you.
So do we have a timeframe on this? That's when we're going to get down. I think if I'm right, I think we all uh said something about two weeks.
Um, this would uh fall within that timeframe. This is the most substantive update that uh that we've had. Uh, we will be reporting back what happens additionally with the smaller funds. But but like we said, I I think that the auditors are going to be feel comfortable issuing their final opinion and closing it out. It's just a matter of trying to close that gap uh some more, so.
Is that going to come back to council, man?
Yes, sure will.
And one of the the water meters that we're installing, they're helping our finance, the process of billing for the water that's being used and making more precise.
That it it's very early in the process, but that is the intent.
Right. So I mean, are we seeing that that is occurring with those that we have installed?
I don't know that we've, have we gone through a billing yet?
Both years and the meters that were grading the, you know, excessive numbers that were costing the millions. I mean, just that registers were changed
Okay.
when that issue occurred. And, you know, of course, they'd have already hidden billing. But once we determined that those beers would find out, they would have placed.
Okay.
So, yeah.
When is the um, or has it already occurred, the training with uh waters? I think that's upcoming. Right now, they're physically putting in the meters, but then the the interface with the computers and the billing system. Um, we're going through some extensive training to make sure that we don't have any such issues.
Okay.
Well, if there's anything possible, I would really like to get this, if we can, um, resolved before we get the budget done. I mean.
Oh, I I think we should be well on the way for that.
So I know we got to schedule another uh meeting for our budget. Maybe we can schedule that for that update on that also.
Well, and some of that is, we we've done, and Mandy has done a great job in-house, but um we're going to have to look at what their schedule is and see when they can get it back to us.
Yeah, of course.
Otherwise, we'll have to budget for forensic audit. So that's, that's why.
And that's still on the table.
Yeah, it's on the table.
Well, at at this point, a forensic audit for um, I don't have a lot of concern about a forensic audit for fifty four thousand dollars. They're they're going to track that down, so.
But it's still on the table.
Yeah, it's on.
It's on the table.
We have to decide this as a council, I guess, yes.
Definitely have to.
Any other questions and comments?
You got, Mr.?
And on forwards? Uh, unless there are any other questions.
But why doesn't it?
They knew you were going to run your mouth. All right, we're ready for the move forward. Prove the contract for city attorney and legal services. So everybody had the chance to look at us over. Can you pull that up on the floor? You don't have, okay, I'll read it. State of South Carolina, County of Pickens Employment Contract for City Attorney. This agreement is made this day, twenty twenty five, by and between the City of Pickens, South Carolina, hearing after called Client and Daniel R. Hughes, Attorney at Law, with the law firm of Dugan and Hughes LLC, being duly licensed to practice law in the state of South Carolina. The effective date of this contract shall be on July the first, twenty twenty five. Whereas pursuant to the City of Pickens ordinance, section two dash one, form one and South Carolina Code five dash seven dash thirty, the Pickens City Council has the authority to appoint an attorney. And whereas pursuant of the City of Pickens ordinance, section two dash one, four, three, shall be the duty of the city attorney to enter appearances in all actions, cases, and special proceedings and to conduct all suits in all courts in which the city is or shall be a party to investigate titles, to give opinions on questions of law when requested to do so by the council or the mayor. And whereas the City Council appointed Daniel R. Hughes as the City Attorney on August seventeenth, twenty twenty, and whereas the City Pickens City Council desires to renew its employment contract with City Attorney pursuant the terms contained herein. Now, therefore, the parties hearing two do hereby agree as follows. The client agrees to hereby does retain Daniel R. Hughes to act as City Attorney to represent its interests and carry out the duties of the City Attorney described above. The City Attorney hereby agrees to bill the services rendered at an hourly rate of two hundred and fifty dollars for each hour or portion expended on the client's behalf. Thus, all costs and expenses incurred on the client's behalf, including copying, costs, and postage performed by a paralegal will be billed at eighty five dollars an hour. This fee will include time for conferences, telephone calls, legal research, and any necessary court appearances or investigative time expended on the client's behalf. The City Attorney agrees to attend the work sessions, meetings. That's the fourth Monday of each month unless excused by council. The City Attorney shall represent the city in the prosecution of its criminal's case jury trials upon request. Client will receive a detailed statement at the end of the month outlining the time spent and the expenses incurred. The City Attorney serves as, at the pleasure of City Council. City Council, in its sole discretion, may terminate this contract at any time. The City Attorney may terminate this contract by providing client with at least ninety days written notice. That is the end of this contract.
That's been.
Do we have any, do we have a motion on the floor to
approve?
Contract?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve this contract as presented.
Can I have a second? It's been promptly moved to second. Now we're ready for question. Does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Um, in our municipal code, unless it's not current, what's on the online version, um, it states in chapter two that the city attorney is an appointment for two years. Their contract is for a two-year period until then. Is that correct? Is that accurate?
Yes.
Is that the current law?
Yes.
So how is it the contract is at will?
I'm sorry.
How is that at will? How is the contract at will? It is a at-will contract. We can fire the attorney at any time, which I'm okay with. But I just want to understand how the municipal code says it's a two-year appointment, but yet it's still basically month to month.
Yeah.
Well, see, the appointment is usually done every election cycle. So the new council that comes on, even though we're doing this today, will have to approve his employment. And it's done every two years.
Okay.
That that the new council is is elected on. Now, when you don't have a new council on during those two years, you still have the leisure and the discretion to terminate the contract, which is good on both parties' behalf.
Thank you.
A question. Did we, did we hear from our attorney about his attendance tonight?
That's, I text. He's supposed to be on his way. Yeah. So he's coming from Greer.
I think that that was.
True.
Not going to make it.
I mean, he, he landed on the evidence.
But they started hearing me.
I have a question.
Just so.
Just uh. And and now therefore paragraph two. Um, I I just want to make sure, I I'm pretty sure the way this is written, it says work performed by a paralegal will be billed at eighty five dollars. This fee will include time for conferences, telephone calls, legal research, any necessary court appearances or investigative time expended on the client's behalf. So but but above that, it said the city attorney agrees to bill at an hourly rate of two fifty for each hour, plus all costs and expenses incurred on client's behalf, incurring copying, costs, and postage. And then it says apparently, I, I'm not, I'm just wanting to make sure that the fees we're talking about, because you saw them on both their fees in the same paragraph. This, this fee, I mean, I I could read that, I know, because I'm, I mean, as an attorney, this fee at eighty five dollars an hour for which person? You know what I mean?
Is that a flat rate or?
Or is that, is that, does that?
Work performed by the paralegal will be billed at eighty five dollars.
An hour period.
Hmm.
Okay, so that ended that, so both of them have, you know, those sentences ended with a period. And then usually if you wanted to, if it would continue with a paralegal, there would be a comma and then would say, and said fee will include time for conferences. But I I'm just read so much legal stuff in my library. You could read this as whose fee will be included for the conferences, telephone calls, legal research? Does that mean the attorney will bill us at eighty five an hour for telephone calls? I've never even talked to the legal, I, you know, attorney, or court appearances or? you, you understand what I mean? I just want to make sure that that's clear to, to us, that are, are we in, is that la- last sentence in paragraph, now number two, just talking about the, continuing to talk about the paralegal? It, I, I think it is?
Yes. I think the last part is not talking about the paralegal, because it talks about time for conferences, telephone calls, legal search.
See that.
Turns, and I think the paralegal is gonna be hired, I mean, appointed by him to help cut our costs as far as.
Right.
Search.
But the, they're gonna take you all the way to the bottom of the paragraph.
Right, so, so, yeah, the sentence, i- i- there's not clarity. Usually when the attorney's involved, I don't care what he's doing, he's billing at two fifty an hour. But I, I know that we had talked about that, you know, the attorney is giving us a break sometimes. And so I didn't know if he's telling us, but if I talk to you on the phone, I'm only gonna charge you eighty-five?
I see what you're saying.
You know what I mean? So I, I don't really, to me, it's not clear as to who is the person that we're having to deal with to be paying what, which amount. Is, is the attorney typically is always two fifty? I don't care what he's doing. But i- i- is this saying that, no, if he's on a telephone call or doing legal research for us or making a court appearance, it will be eighty-five?
No, I, I don't believe that's what I'm saying. And I just got off the phone with, uh, there was some snafu and he did not believe that we were meeting on this topic this evening.
Oh.
What we might want to do is hold off. And I think there are some amendments that need to be made. For instance, will be billed at eighty-five dollars, probably needs to be moved to another paragraph, and it needs to include an hour.
Right.
Um, that's a minor Scrivener's error, but we need to address it. Um, and I think Daniel would like to be here. He sent his apologies um, in the back and forth, trying to schedule this meeting after the, um, the holiday weekend. He didn't understand while we were comparing different dates that we actually settled on one.
So if you could clarify that, then when, before our next.
We'll send it back to him.
You know, that's who, what does he get paid for doing what? And what does the paralegal get paid for doing what? And let, yeah, make those two different paragraphs. So we are counsel is very clear. You get what I mean? I'm not trying to make a big deal out of this, but.
I made the motion and I withdraw my motion.
Okay. Motion has been withdrawn. That. So we'll get it back on the table next meeting. Okay, number six, first reading. Ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash oh three to rezone property and to amend the official zoning map of the city of Pickens parcel number ten one eight one dash one four dash four two dash three six five one eight one five B West Main Street. Can you give us an explanation?
Um, we have our, um, planning extraordinary person here, Jennifer Visage. The planning commission has reviewed this and Jennifer can speak to the issue.
Well, I didn't see you back then. And, all right.
And it, it's nice to have you here since you know all this stuff.
I'm always one.
Since you know all the stuff. Thank you.
This is, y'all know where, um, Butterfly Wellness is moved. It's the vacant parcel behind it. It is currently general business district.
She need it.
Um, do I need a microphone or?
Sure, yeah. They got people out in the halls, so.
Okay, sorry if y'all can hear me. Um, so it's the, sorry, the vacant piece of property behind where Butterfly Wellness is. It is currently zoned general business district, but all the parcels behind there are vacant and in ones that are, already have houses. They're already R twelve and the applicant would like to, um, do R twelve as well, so maybe he could put a single family. He doesn't have plans exactly yet, but something to do with single family. So that's really.
So am I reading this wrong, Mr. Mayor? Sorry. In section one, it says, um, the following parcel is listed below from R twelve to GBD.
I'm gonna go, it's backwards.
Okay.
Thank you for good.
Yeah.
I'll show you on tables.
So the first paragraph.
Yeah, we can amend that on the fly.
Yeah.
So I was within, I guess I was backwards on the other one.
Okay. And that, that is a correction we can make based on the motion.
Okay, okay, great, great. Thank you.
Yeah.
As you called it, you make the motion. If you feel that way.
And.
Mr. Mayor, I, I'm confused. Um, I'm looking at the zoning map and it seems to show this parcel already zoned residential. Am I looking at that wrong? This is the best I've got. Um.
Uh, yeah, it's GBD.
Right there in some of that dung, oh, right there. It's the second. I thought it was this one.
Yeah, it's this one.
First.
Only see, yeah, fifteen.
Oh, hang on, this is.
Eight fifteen was Main Street.
Is B right?
Uh, it's B because Butterfly Wellness, for some reason, they can't give it an A to P.
Can you pull that up too?
Glad.
See what, what they're talking about?
Well, I'm.
Of course. I need to connect, that's that way else.
And.
Here is the parcel, this is.
Can you tell right here, can you tell the, tell administrator what you're looking at so we can put it up on the?
Um, we're looking at the Pickens County Accessors Office website.
And that's one.
Sorry, no, sorry.
Hey, hang on a minute.
See, she write this one?
Counselor, can you hang on a minute?
No.
No, he said, no, I'm sorry, Lee.
So he would break me, so.
We're, we're trying to get it up.
The zoning.
The, the zoning map is not accurate. Thanks.
That's not the first.
We should.
I would have never.
Every time I look at it, it's inaccurate.
Every time I look at it.
Yeah.
But so if you look at that.
Yes, okay, thank you. I will say this, that the zoning map that we have a bit access to seems really hard to pull it in tight where you can, there's the resolution was not good and, and it's hard to really even see the property lines and what's what. So I don't know if that, yeah, I didn't.
Like a copy of the mail to them.
Plus the others. Yes.
Eight.
Being West Main. If y'all would like to copy, I can email to.
Yes.
Copy of it, the electric eight aisle, I'm into the zoom-ins.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Are you the official keeper of the zoning map?
Yes, sorry, yes, sir.
So we, do we have one? I mean, do we have like a, there's one on the wall. Okay. How, how accurate is that one?
Um, he did about, I'm believing.
Okay.
But I'm still finding mistakes on it.
Mine's accurate, but yours.
But now, of course. So since this was brought up to the planning commission, what is the recommendation?
Oh, their recommendation was to.
Of the person.
Okay.
Let me ask you this, would, would, would the property owner have to create some kind of, um, buffer between the, the residential and the commercial?
Um, no, because it's residential and, um, because it's a business, already is a stair that would not exist to us since it was there.
Okay.
Could, could, could you describe the question that was just asked to you and what, and what we're, so, so that everyone can see?
He was asking if there had to be a buffer between, um, the two pieces of property, but I don't think we have to because, uh, the business was there first. We would compare them since they were there second.
Right. Okay.
They may still do it on the phone.
Well, right, right, right. I just, I just know that there is a, when, when you have commercial uses and residential uses, hard zoning, planning ordinances require buffers between the two typically. Now, there are, there are conditions under which you have to provide them, which you've alluded to. Um, and I just wanted to.
Watch, watch, and it looks like I'm still on him, watch him.
Jennifer, is, is there an easement, I'm assuming on that gravel, it looks like driveway going, okay, to the property?
There is an easement back there, yes. So zoning says, you know.
Yeah.
You get a map and they did.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we, um, consider the first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five oh three to rezone the property and to amend the official zoning map of the city of Pickens parcel number four one eight one dash one four dash four two dash three six five one, which is addressed eight fifteen B West Main Street, pending a change to the wording on page one of the ordinance in section one. Uh, this should read, "The Council of the City of Pickens, South Carolina finds and declares as legislative body of the city that it is in the best interest of the citizens of the city to rezone the following parcel listed below from GBD to R twelve."
I'm saying.
We have enough time.
That's a motion. Do we have a second?
I think, okay, I best to get all that.
Do we have a second on said motion?
I have a second in it.
Okay, thank you. It's been promptly moved to second. Are you ready for question?
It is, is the, is the, Jennifer, is the, the property next to it, is that commercial?
Um, which one?
So, uh, anger seven, eight oh seven, West Main, is that? Is that?
Eighty thousand times.
Eighty seven.
Eight oh seven. Um, I think that's, I think that's residential.
Trade House is residential.
Okay, but, but.
That's your public works direction.
But it's own business, it's own general business district.
Um, the city of West Main Street ends for some reason, but it's house, then tab house there.
Cause it's grandfathered in.
But for some reason, I have no idea why I came in here and threw it all, because I told what.
Well, but, but isn't highway frontage usually commercial?
Yes.
Zonings? I mean, don't you want that pretty much? Do you want your highway frontages? I mean.
House was probably way there. Doesn't.
Oh, yeah, that's old house.
And you know, in another world, it's something, so it's more.
You know, than, than just the residential zoning, you know, regardless of the use. I mean, so it seems like you would want to hang on to your commercial zoning designation. Cause in the future, it may be a lot harder to change that back or change it to something else. Um, but, um.
So we. Any other question, comment? All in favor, raise your right hand. Nay?
Do not.
You a nay or yea?
I'm a nay.
A nay?
I'm a nay.
Okay. All right.
It gets him a copy of the map, or don't.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, number seven, first reading ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash four to annex two hundred and fifteen acres located at the north side of Wolf Creek Road and Malden Lake Road, parcel number four one eight zero dash zero zero dash four six dash one one nine. We're ready for a motion.
Once, that was one one zero nine, I believe.
Yes.
See.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the first reading of, of an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by Eddie Dean Holder, trustee of the Eddie Dean Holder Revocable Trust, dated March twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen, as amended, located at the intersection of Malden Lake Road and Wolf Creek School Road, tax map parcel number four one eight zero dash zero zero dash four six dash one one zero nine by one hundred percent petition method pursuant to the provisions of South Carolina Code, section five dash three dash one fifty, section three, and to establish a zoning classification to be determined upon a recommendation from the planning commission and subsequent city council action for said properties with second reading approval contingent upon the following conditions precedent. The execution, and these are the, the conditions. The execution of a fully executed development agreement and recordable fair pursuant to the statutory requirements of South Carolina Code, section six dash three one dash ten, et cetera, between the city and the developer that requires and is subject to, among other things, approved building standards, density limitations, landscaping, sufficient ingress and egress, and other elements of the proposed development, including the provisions of utilities, and that the development agreement be perpetual and binding upon all successors in interest to the development agreement.
That's very good. Thank you, Lord. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been promptly moved to second. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Can we discuss?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Discuss, I'm sorry. I'm ready to get this behind.
Mr. Mayor, I, I would like to just make a comment, um, about this, a- a- and, and I want to reiterate again, and I know there's, the information's been out there that, that this is not a final decision on this request for annexation and the subsequent development of the property. This is an important step, though, to getting an answer to many questions that still remain about the, uh, the ability of, of the city to provide the proper services and, and, and whatnot. And, uh, so, um, I'm in favor of, of, and of this, of this reading, because I want more answers to, to our questions and the, the way this procedure has to work is that if we don't have a first reading, there are some things that just aren't triggered in, in the code to, to help us get those answers. So, um, I wanted to just be clear about that with, with other council members and with, and with the public about what, uh, what this is about, at least for me. Thank, thank.
Okay.
I, I echo much of what Councilman Manis said. I think it's important to understand that I am in favor of this first reading so, and have, still have questions that need to be answered, some of which are coming up daily. I did, was able to locate the right of way and the easement for the sewer line on that property, which I'll share with council. Um, cause I know there were some concerns from the public that that was not already in place and was not recorded. But I think that systematically, this is the first step that we need to make in order to have the planning commission dig in, have the administrator get some more answers for us regarding utility information, and, um, start fine tuning the development agreement that's been drafted. So that's my thoughts.
Yep. Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I agree with all of this been said. I, I believe this has been sitting, you know, since I've been on council a year and a half, and, and it's going nowhere, and we're not getting any more answers because no one's willing to provide. I mean, we have to make a good faith effort one way or another, either to, uh, to just put this behind us or to go forward and find out answers. I mean, we have no contract, you know, we don't know about the water rights. We, I mean, we can't even question these people because they won't answer us. You know, we don't, I, to my satisfaction, you know, we don't have a rendering, you know, I'd like to have a clear rendering, what it's gonna look like. Um, I want a, a contract that our attorney can review, you know what I mean, and, and advise us on. And all we've had is a, I don't know, one that we've just sort of did a boilerplate kind of a contract and, and it's, you know, there's, there's nothing that we can really review uh, because it's all open to change, you know, so I think that we were, I, I'm only in favor of taking this step. I'm not the second, I would not tonight, and I would never vote for a final reading. Um, in a final reading of vote, you know, I guess with the information that we have right now, I could not do it and I would not do it. So I think that this will open up the floor to council and for everyone to continue this process, give the planning commission opportunity to get involved, and have all of our answers, our questions answered, you know what I mean, so we can come up with a yea or nay on this and put it behind us. And I, I just, I don't want this to drag out anymore for anybody involved, including council. You know, so I, I hope, I've been trying to write letters and I know everyone has explaining this, that this process is, this is not a final vote, that this is just the beginning of our process and I hope that you guys can understand that we're not voting one way or another, really, we're just saying, let's move on and let's find out some answers.
He said, anybody else have anything to say? Cam?
Uh. Anything you want to say? I agree a lot with, uh, Councilman Rogers and everything he said, uh, for me, it's been more of, um, I think we've had time, I've asked questions for months, never got answers, um, lack of information. So I'm at the point where right now I can't, I have to vote no for it because I'm, you know, I've asked for, you know, information over and over again, have not gotten it. Um, so, but see, I'm on the opposite side of that. So right now, it's gonna be a no for me because of those races, but it could change. But it could change once I start getting some answers.
Yeah.
But I just, I just feel like, um, I need a lot, a lot more information. And I like to say that I have a lot of, I've had a lot of phone calls, emails from people and you really have to pay attention to those. That, yeah, so I'm paying attention to that.
Anybody else? As far as I'm concerned, though, like I said, I started this journey from the beginning. And when I tabled it, folk got mad at me. And I had to deal with that. What I'm trying to do as mayor, all the ones that's telling us to vote no tonight, don't understand that we're trying to be fair and do this thing in its completeness. Like we said, a lot of things have not been answered. This is not the final vote. I'm telling you, when we get through with this and we start really digging in, there's no telling what might come up. But I'm going to vote that we move forward as far as at least getting some information. So my vote will be yes. And then who's to say? I'm like you, Cameron. When we do get it all, it might be no and you might be yes. But it's all about getting all of the facts on the table and dealing with it from there. Does anybody have anything else to say? From that being said, I'd like to thank you all for taking the abuse and the hard comments and it hadn't stopped yet. Thank you, administrator and our finance director and all of our employees. I thank you all. It's been moved and properly second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose this, raise your right hand. It's five to one. And I promise you, we will be very diligent in moving forward. Comments from council. Anybody have any comments? Also, I want to say this, this is going to be also going to the planning commission after this. After the planning commission, we'll be opening it up to have public to come in and say whatever you'd like. We're not going to deny you that opportunity. And we'll move forward in that way. It's going to the planning commission now. And then they'll come back to us and we will have the public and we have a public hearing. That being said.
I have comment.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I think we need to come up with our next budget meeting date and time.
Thank you. That's good. Thank you for reminding us. Would it be next Wednesday would be good?
And.
We do it on Wednesdays or what?
I think that's.
I can't be here next Wednesday.
All right, Tuesday. When about two?
I.
Oh, we're just. Tuesday night, yeah, let's do it to, we don't have a whole lot like we did before. We start this. Let's do it about five o'clock, 5:30? All right, right? Councilman.
Yeah, I should be over there.
June the 3rd. Tuesday, June the 3rd, 5:30?
Unless, unless you wanted to do it earlier in the day on Wednesday. I have an evening commitment, Wednesday evening, but I could do it earlier in the day.
Okay, we can do it then. And then you have off that day, don't you?
But, 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 Mr.
Oh.
Councilman McNannis.
No, he already told us that anytime we do it.
Okay.
He's right.
That's right.
I'm just teasing.
Whatever council decides, I will adjust because I am dedicated to this council. I'm here for this council. So that's whatever time and date.
Okay.
I'm there unless, unless there's something really, really, really bold.
Okay.
You know, happening.
Thanks.
In my life personally.
How about 9:00 AM?
9:00 AM on the 4th?
On the 4th.
That sounds great.
June 4th, 9:00 AM?
Yes.
You're going, we're going to do lunch again or you're treating us this time?
We do breakfast. Yeah, we're going to have lunch. Do breakfast.
June 4th, that's going to be a long day.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
I would just ask council, we've all been exposed to this a good deal. Some of you have shared some things with me. I think it would be most productive a phone call, an email of some of the things that you really want to dig into because I think we're at that point where we've kind of made the first thing, but I want to be able to come to you with potential recommendations, solutions, and know what's going to come up.
Yes.
And we go through. Phone call.
Yeah.
Just email, email anything that you want to.
Yeah, I sent an email out today.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. For dog.
Yeah, I just.
Please, so we can have it as a matter of record too.
Okay.
How we going to move forward?
And maybe just of that, we could bring up the budget also.
I'm sorry.
In this meeting, we could also bring up.
That's what we're doing.
Budget, but the audit, I mean, I'm sorry.
Oh, the audit, yeah, that's part of the budget.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we can bring that up.
This will be a work session, so it'll.
And we can probably see where they're at with that. They can also see where we're at. It'd be on the general. All right, I'll have to entertain a motion.
I make a motion for a job.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Probably move the second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Issue.
John's not in here.
And so we're done. Thank you so much, everyone.